2021 Planning Commission Committee of the Whole Meeting. The committee allows for a more detailed conversation and exploration of issues. I would like to ask for patience as we continue to conduct virtual meetings. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have issues with technology, please send a message to moderator. There are two discussion items on the agenda today. There are some members of the public joining us today as well. We typically do not have time limits for speakers at the Committee of the Whole. I would ask everyone to be respectful of our time, and if you would like to speak, please send a message to the moderator. I would ask that comments not be duplicative, and for the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. I would also ask each commissioner to be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. Our first item this evening is text change TC 1920, rezoning process and city code covenants. This text change was previously discussed during our last meeting. This proposal would amend Part 10 of the Raleigh Unified Development Ordinance to bring the rezoning process into compliance with recent changes in state law, remove the requirement for recording city code covenants, and streamline the Planning Commission's review of applications. Justin Remetta will present on behalf of city staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, committee members. Justin Remetta with Planning and Development. As you just heard, and as you'll recall, we discussed this at your last meeting in March. I don't have a formal presentation for you today, but I did want to point out some of the materials in your backup. The attached ordinance does have several minor changes that I just wanted to quickly point out from our last discussion. First, there's been some highlighting added. So procedural changes are highlighted in green, and changes that are required by being driven by changes to state law are highlighted in yellow for clarity there. And then I just also wanted to point out quickly, one other minor change would be in Section 3 of the draft ordinance. Section 10.1.8 was amended to reflect the new terminology with text change TCZ cases, text change for rezonings. And on page nine, Section 10.2.4E to B was just reworded slightly to clarify that the "no more than one time" clause in that section applied to everything in that list. So substantive changes there, just some clarification. So I'm happy to take the committee's direction as to how you'd like to proceed with your review or answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Remetta. From my notes from our last meeting, I saw that commissioners had specific questions relating to establishment of a PD district, application requirements, specifically additional requirements for conditional use rezoning and TCZ applications related to subsection B, and additional requirements for campus master plan and PD district applications. Also, the approval process related to Planning Commission action and the schedule associated with rezoning application review. It may be most helpful to have you pull up the body of the text, and we can go through that section by section.
Sure.
Thank you.
Bear with me one moment here. Try that again. Okay, I hope you're all seeing that now. Did you want to start at the beginning? I believe at our last meeting, we had made some progress, but I'm happy to start anywhere you'd like.
Please go ahead. You can start at the beginning, and we'll just kind of roll through it. And if it's helpful to staff, we may express our opinion by a raising of hand vote just to make sure you have clear direction on each item.
Okay, so Section 1 is the removal of the city code covenant and then the replacement with the majority vote language as per state law.
Do any commission members have questions about this? Okay, keep moving. Thank you.
Sure. Section 2, then, is the terminology change to conditional zoning districts.
Not seeing any questions on this area as well. Keep moving forward.
The PD language was moved into this new Section 2A. As I referenced, Section 3 was added. Happy to provide any further explanation. Section 10.1.8 is simply a table that shows what body is responsible for reviewing each type of project. And again, it just reflects the new terminology of the TCZ language in that table.
Thank you. Do any commission members have questions on that section? Okay, let's go ahead and keep moving.
Sorry, I didn't mean to skip all that. Continuation here is the changes to neighborhood meetings, new terminology, rezoning or TCZ.
Are any questions related to this area? Seeing none? Okay, move forward.
More changes here highlighted in yellow for changes related to 160D.
Any questions related to the change? Commissioner McIntosh?
It's not really related to the change, but I was just curious about the changes that are not highlighted. I just was wondering, you know, I understand the yellow highlight and the green highlight, but what, is there a category for the ones that are not highlighted? Just curiosity.
This is David York. The changes that are not highlighted were for clarity and cleaning up language that wasn't needed, if that makes sense. So some are just changes that reference other changes in yellow or green, and then some are just sort of cleaning up the section and removing some things or reorganizing sections.
Thank you. Feel free to ask any questions related to highlighted items or non-highlighted items as we're moving forward. Are there any questions on this particular section? Application requirements, general requirements that are at the bottom of page 4? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Remetta, you can move forward.
All right, moving on to page 5. Continuation of the application requirements.
Did I see a hand, or was that just moving? Okay, question, Mr. Remetta. This piece, I apologize, I don't have this in my notes. Is this a section that deals with the space of time between rezoning applications?
I believe that is, we have not quite got there yet.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions up into the Section 2? Okay, seeing none, let's move forward.
Okay, some more clarity, non-highlighted changes here for clarity.
I do have one question here related to new Section B and minimum block standards and sub-street standards. I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission. So what this section does is allow a zoning condition to remove requirements related to meeting minimum block standards and sub-street standards that are found in the code. If we think about what a zoning condition is, it's to propose greater restrictions on development and the use of a property that wouldn't apply under the corresponding general use district. So making a condition proposes something that's more restrictive. In this particular case, this allows a condition that proposes something that, in my opinion, is less restrictive. There is a process of review for these that had been in place prior to this allowance being inserted into the code. I believe those went through the Appearance Commission at the site plan phase. So is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner McIntosh?
I am concerned about the idea that we'd be taking away, we'd be making a condition that would be, wouldn't, I'm not, I don't have wording for this. I agree with, well, I agree with what you stated about, I'm concerned that this would allow a condition to not be as strict as the code allows.
Commissioner Lantman?
Would there be, and just to think it through, would there be any set of circumstances where perhaps the existing code might be overly, it might not make sense for a particular development, and so we could offer a condition that might help alleviate some of the challenges that the developers facing with the code? I just don't know if that would be legal, so to speak.
Well, it isn't there now. It had been prior to this text change. I'd ask staff if they want to comment on this one, but I'd offer my opinion in that if the intent of conditions is to propose things that are more restrictive, proposing a method of alleviation would not be in a condition. It would be through a release valve process, like propose a design alternate or special approval or seeking a variance versus through the conditional use process. That's my personal opinion. Justin Remetta, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, so generally, there's language in the code that says, you know, conditions can be more restrictive but not less restrictive than existing code. This particular provision was added. So this is an exception to that case where it is explicitly stated in the code that this option is available.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Chair Fox. Mr. Remetta, can you explain why this was added?
Mr. Remetta, I think your screen shares are shifting between screens.
Thank you, sorry.
No worries. Commissioner Bennett, I apologize. Go ahead. That's okay.
I know this was a change that was adopted by council several years ago. I think that maybe Travis or Jason Myers from Transportation might have some more insight as to specifically, you know, the details of what drove the implementation of that exception.
Sure, this is Travis. I'd be happy to. First, let's take a step back and think about the different avenues that a site developer can choose to vary a block perimeter standard or a street standard. And that's really what this section intends to reference. So back in 20, oh gosh, it was probably 2013, 2014, somewhere around there, there was a request to place this language in the code, and it was specifically generated by a zoning case. And so an applicant at the time requested that language be added to the code that would allow for some sort of lessening of the standard in Chapter 8.3 through the legislative process. So before this language was added to the code, there was the design adjustment process, which required a public meeting and ultimately staff approval. That has since shifted to the Appearance Commission in a quasi-judicial public hearing. So that's still available today. Another available avenue is with the Board of Adjustment through the traditional variance scenario. And I think that's what Commissioner Lantman might have been referencing. You know, if there are certain things that just make it implausible or impractical to connect a street, that's the typical avenue for a variance. So this really is, and was added as door number three in the code, which would allow for a condition to be submitted that through the legislative review process could vary that standard. And I think what Chairperson Fox is raising is, it's a good question. You know, should this be an allowance through a zoning condition and through the legislative process? Staff, quite honestly, is not a huge fan of this language in the code and wouldn't have much issue if it was removed from this section.
Commissioner McIntosh?
I guess I'll just add that I can remember several cases we've reviewed where the block perimeter requirements were not met, but it was, you know, still under review. And I think some have been approved and some weren't approved. But so I'm not sure, I don't think not having this condition option would keep anyone from rezoning property.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any additional comments on this item?
If I could just add one, there was a text change TC, I want to say it's TC 619, maybe, where the requirements for block perimeter, what developments are required to comply with block perimeter and so forth, were revised to try to minimize the number of cases that were then going to the Board of Adjustment. And so we created through that text change objective standards to try to weed out sort of the easy calls for when the block perimeter shouldn't be imposed or when cross-access shouldn't be required and all those aspects in Article 8.3 of the UDO. And so the, there has been other relief provided that wasn't in place in the UDO when this was originally added to Chapter 10.
Thank you for that, Mr. York. If other commissioners are interested in removing this section, removing this allowance, I might also offer as a compromise, this could be offered as a condition when a master plan is submitted, such that, like a PD. So you have sufficient amount of information to make a decision related to the impact of not meeting block standards. By show of hands, I see some nods. By show of hands, is there agreement on that item? Or would you like additional discussion? See some thumbs up, some hands. I think that's a sufficient amount of hands. I don't know, Commissioner Mann, if you wanted to discuss that one any further?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that, Mr. Remetta, does that give you sufficient amount of information to move forward on this item?
I think so. And just note that the PD already has the ability to modify Chapter 8, so no further changes would be needed for that. Okay.
Noted. Thank you, sir. If you can pull back up, and we will proceed from our last place. Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on to page 6. Changes for state law in yellow, allowing site plans and rendering to be submitted. And then page 6 into page 7.
Are there any questions related to page 6 items and then the highlighted portions as we move into page 7? Yeah, okay, please proceed.
Rest of page 7, mostly state law-related changes related to historic districts.
I might ask one question at this point related to additional requirements for campus master plan and PD districts. I don't think it's an appropriate change of text to propose in this particular piece of the code. I would like to propose that we do discuss the review process for PDs, old code versus new code, if you'll indulge me momentarily. Mr. Crane, I don't know if you would want to answer that with the review processes or PDs in the old code versus current code.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So prior to 2013, there was a planned development conditional use district that allowed for a rezoning and a fairly detailed site plan to go along with it. And the benefit to the applicant and to the public in using this type of tool was that there was more certainty that could be discussed at time of rezoning. For the applicant and the property owner, the benefit was that once the rezoning was approved, the preliminary site plan was also approved. And so think back to the old code. There really were a couple of different steps in the site plan process. There was the preliminary site plan process, and then you got into more detailed site review and planning and building permits. So you essentially bundled the step of preliminary site plan review and rezoning together. When the UDO was drafted and originally adopted, the planned development district was reshaped a little bit. It was meant to be more of a conceptual district where different standards could be envisioned in different areas on a property. Still had the same allowances in the planned development districts, meaning you can alter development standards through the planned development master plan. And then that's a conversation that I think we're all very familiar with. Essentially, the planned development is a customized zoning district where you're writing the majority of your code standards with that document. So again, when the UDO was adopted, was really thought that the planned development would be more of a conceptual document, and there was no bundling of site plan. So that really was one of the big differences that occurred between the two codes. Now, I will admit that staff has been piloting a process where rezoning applicants can also go through site plan review concurrently, which it's only been done a few times. I'm not sure if, I know that I have not received a report as to, you know, how well it's working. I'm not sure if other staff on the call have any indication of that. But it's still something that we're looking at administratively moving forward.
Just my observation, Mr. Crane. There are perhaps less PDs or some rezonings that we've seen. Perhaps a very, very large one that we saw at the end of the year might have benefited from being a PD. As I questioned applicants and on a couple of cases at this point, on cases that could have benefited from being a PD, the response I was getting was there is no more, there is no benefit to doing that. So...
Sure, and that's, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that certainly is a small decision for applicants. And we've seen planned developments on very, very small properties, meaning very singular property with one building on it. Conversely, we've seen very large rezonings, like the one at the end of last year. That was a conditional use zoning. So, you know, the benefit is, in my opinion, is really in the amount of detail that's supplied through the legislative process of rezoning. And that's always a point that I've tried to make with applicants is if you are processing a rezoning and you know there will be certain questions about the size of the property or the scale of development or the phasing of development, or it's a complicated development project, then a planned development really can be beneficial because you can start to tell that story through the master plan document. In my opinion, it's easier to do that as opposed to doing it through conditions, which is just the straight verbiage, and it's usually legal language. It's hard to parse through, especially if you're a layperson. So, you know, the benefit could be seen through the legislative process. But at the end of the day, it really is the applicant's decision whether or not they want to submit planned development zoning, even a conditional use zoning. Now, there's always the general use of rezoning path. So as much counseling as staff can provide to applicants, it really is the applicant's decision.
With the agreement of other commission members, I would be interested in looking at ways to incentivize PD districts to address some of those issues. I'm seeing some thumbs up. Do I have any hands that would be interested acknowledging that it wouldn't take place in this section of code? That this is something I'd be interested in working on? Okay, I saw some hands. Is there a question, Commissioner Heber?
Yeah, I do have a question. Certainly agree that I think there should be some benefits to the PD. I guess a lot of these text changes we're talking about, and some of the most recent changes are getting away from subjective decisions and putting them more into objective. And in Section 2, where we are now pushing state code to allow site plan renderings and other conditions to be submitted, I think I've had conversations with a lot of you on the commission and staff that I understand the benefit of that. But I guess I just have an overall question on, if a PD, there's a benefit to a PD, and we, one of the benefits is you can start to create your own zoning standards. Where is the objectivity versus the subjectivity? What is that, what is that based upon? I mean, just because you do a master plan and you have smaller parcel sizes, or you have less setbacks, or you have different storm, or like, what are we? And I'm not saying I'm for or against it. Quite frankly, I think there needs to be a little bit more subjectivity because not every ASR or, you know, master plan or rezoning is going to meet every code requirement. But it just seems like we, as a community, are sort of reeling that subjectivity back in, and everything is sort of BOA, quasi-judicial, so on and so forth. And now we've got this PD, which I certainly, again, I see all the benefits. I guess I'm just trying to figure out, all of a sudden, as you were talking, Chair Fox, like, what are we measuring that against? So we're doing smaller parcels. Okay, so just because we draw a master plan, that's okay? Like, how are we taking the subjectivity out of it? Maybe that's conversation for a different meeting? I don't know, just curious, your thoughts on that?
It might be helpful if perhaps Mr. Crane could walk through the review process for a PD that's slightly different than the review process for other rezoning applications.
I'd be happy to. And first, let me start. I don't want to be too long-winded here, but just step back and think about the three different doors that we're allowed to walk through for approval in the state of North Carolina. The first is the legislative process. And so the legislative process we commonly see through the rezoning. And that's door number one. It requires a legislative hearing. That's recommendation from the Planning Commission or a planning board. And then ultimate approval or denial from the city board, which is the city council. The second door we're allowed to walk through is that quasi-judicial door, which does have some subjectivity in review, but there are definitive standards that are defined by state law that allow for the analysis. that allow for the analysis of the case and the review. So that requires fairly rigid testimony in front of a board, sworn testimony in front of the Board of Adjustment or the Raleigh Historic Development Commission. Now we have it in Raleigh in front of the Appearance Commission, but it's a much more structured conversation. And the third door that we're allowed to walk through is the administrative review. It's also known as ministerial review. And that is the act of staff applying the code standards that have been adopted through legislative process by the city council. And in that third door, or walking through that third door, staff is not allowed to have any subjectivity. We must apply objective standards. So that's why you might notice that some of the language here is really trying to reference more objective things in nature. And I think you're really speaking, Commissioner O'Haver, to a couple of different buckets here, one being the administrative review, the other in being more objectivity in developing a master plan. And now's a good time to have the conversation if you wish. I'm also happy to have the conversation offline. And you know, how that happens, how applicants decide that a master plan is right for them. And you're correct. Each one of these is its own independent zoning district. So the applicant is looking at their development program and identifying development standards that fit for that program quite clearly. So in master plan review and plan development review, staff takes a larger approach to how these documents are reviewed. There's a longer benchmark timeframe for staff review, and that's because we involve many other departments in the review of the development standards that are being created in the master plan. So whereas a conditional use zoning, we might cast our net a little bit more narrowly. In the review, master plans usually get much more review and much more scrutiny by our current planning division because ultimately they're the ones that have to review those standards in concert with the site plan. I hope that answers your question.
Sorry, looking for the mute button. It does generally, I think we'll probably have continued conversations around this, but I agree, there should probably be some benefit. Or I would be, I would be in agreement that we should look to discuss some benefit to going through that extra step, so.
Thank you for that, sir. With that, Mr. Ramada, can you pull up the text again?
Sure.
Do any commissioners have questions about additional requirements for general HOD or street side HOD? Seeing none, let's move forward.
Okay, into page eight, moving into changes to NCOD standards.
I had one clarifying question. I just wanted to verify that the mailing requirements at the 500 and 1,000 foot, those apply to NCOD rezonings, correct?
They do, and the NCODs have their own separate notification requirements as well, whenever they're adopted or modified to, for folks within the neighborhood.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional questions in the NCOD section? Seeing none, let's move forward.
Okay, page nine, you're looking in, getting into the procedural changes for your review. Again, just wanted to point out here the minor rewording of what was subsection D and will now be subsection B. Just to clarify that this no more than one time clause applies to everything in this list. So that is slightly different than what you saw last time.
Thank you for that. I'm wondering if staff could tell us what the implications are of removing the 45 day requirement to get the case to Planning Commission? I don't know if I fully understood the impact of that.
Sure, this is, I'd be happy to. So that was something that was put in the UDO for the first time. We had not had that before. And there was an attempt to really frame with very hard boundaries, the rezoning process. And there are really three phases, if you will, of the rezoning process. There's the staff review. There's the planning commission review, and then there's the city council review. So the 45 days was put into the UDO. It was just an attempt to provide some certainty moving forward because we were moving away from quarterly public hearings, which was a thing that we used to have. So the way the reasoning process used to work, there was an initial public hearing between the planning commission and city council together. It was a joint public hearing. It happened every quarter, once a quarter at night in a special meeting where all of the cases were presented at once. There was testimony or there was comment taken from both the applicant and proponents and the opponents. And then the cases were all summarily referred to the planning commission. And that's where a bulk of the review happened, was at the planning commission. And then items were brought back to the city council and more times than not, they're often treated just as a consent item, if you will. They didn't happen on consent, but it was just a very quick reading into the record and a vote and moving on. So the UDO re-envisioned the rezoning process where the planning commission, rightfully so, did all the heavy lifting and negotiation with the applicants and listening to the interested parties. So the 45 day clock was put there just to give some certainty to applicants that yes, you are going to move forward within a certain amount of time. What we've seen in the last 12 to 14 months is, you know, having this, what I'll call the shot clock on the front end. It's forcing staff to bring more cases to the planning commission. And quite frankly, the planning commission has become overwhelmed with cases. We had 70 zoning cases last year, which is the highest number of zoning cases that we've had since, I think, 2006. But certainly the highest number that I've seen since I've been with the city in 2008. So this, this huge influx of zoning cases has caused us to start creating that consent portion of your agenda, which we never saw before April of last year, and start placing cases on the agenda when we were done with the review. But planning commission wasn't quite ready for it. So removing this standard, I don't believe will cause any delay to applicants. It will give a little bit more time for the staff review. Remember that a second neighborhood meeting has been added. And I've heard from staff that that sometimes becomes a pinch point between the finalization of staff review and scheduling for planning commission. So that will create a little bit more space there. And then cases will still be delivered to the planning commission in a timely manner. So just thinking about the process, again philosophically, this, and this kind of ties in nicely to the next comment that I imagine will help the timeframe. So that second phase is the planning commission review. So it was initially set at 90 days. There's this suggestion here in the draft to reduce that to 60 days. Taken in isolation, I know that seems like, well, you're just taking time away from the planning commission. But there's a larger philosophy in play here, which is that through the staff review and through the planning commission review and the two neighborhood meetings, that there will be much more conversation deliberation and amendment to zoning conditions and refinement of the case before it reaches the planning commission table. So that then you'd have enough of a starting point, if you will, to really have an honest conversation about the case. What I have seen in my tenure with the city of Raleigh is oftentimes, this doesn't always happen, but sometimes it does. Cases are submitted and the application moves through the process and it's like a slow drip of additional zoning conditions. The intent here is to remove that drip and get more of that work done upfront so that then the planning commission can have a real solid conversation in a public forum and then deliver a recommendation to the city council. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
So to put another way, what you're saying, removing the staff dot clock allows longer time on the front end. So in theory, the cases that we get when we do get them on the agenda are better.
That's a great way to put it. Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions, Commissioner O'Haver?
Yeah, I just wondered because I mean, I had a, I've been having conversations this week with a developer who's looking to rezone property. And they're, they're trying to, they're trying to marry the schedule of the rezoning and permitting to some of their financial obligations and commitments and other things. And so it, it would seem to me that at least having something at the beginning so that an applicant understands generally what the timeline is. Because I hear what you're saying, take the shot clock away at the beginning, less time on the back end. But you have applicants coming in and they're trying to figure out how long this process is going to take. And my response to them is going to be, well, it depends on you at the beginning. It could be X, Y, or Z. I can't really answer this question. And they're going to be scratching their heads. I don't know. It's just something I'm thinking because literally I've had multiple conversations this week in trying to help an applicant marry the timeframes through the process to some of their financial obligations. So just a thought.
And I, if, this is Travis, if I can respond to that. And I'd certainly understand and appreciate that perspective. I don't believe that we won't have any data to share with you, however. So you know, we can, absent any shot clock, we can still provide benchmarks for, you know, a typical review for staff. You know, we, we as staff live and die by the calendar. And so we are always trying to plan out when neighborhood meetings will happen, when mailings need to happen, when signs need to be posted, when planning commission needs to happen. So we are committed to the calendar, if you will. So we will have an ample amount of data and be able to show, you know, on average, this is what it takes to be delivered to the planning commission. And on average, this is what it takes to get through the planning commission process. You know, we've got pretty broad numbers now, like we know on average how long it takes us to get through the entire process. So I think we could be helpful there.
Fair enough. I think that makes sense.
Are there any additional questions or is there more discussion on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Ramada, please move forward.
Okay, page 10, moving on to the remainder of the legal changes to the planning commission review and moving on to the legislative hearing by council.
Do any commissioners have questions about this section? Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Chair Fox. Mr. Ramada, can you make it bigger again, please? It got smaller, so now I can't quite read it.
Sure, sorry about that.
That's okay. I'm trying to read the one at the very top. It kind of started on the, at the bottom of the previous page. And yes, that's. Okay, I'm, I guess I'm curious about the change from the planning commission shall include the adoption of a statement to shall advise and comment on. That sounds like a watering down to me. What's the, what's, why is that change to advise and comment from adopting a statement?
This is Travis. I might ask for an assist from David here, but I believe that's from state law. So the city council is the body that adopts a statement of consistency. And the planning commission is the body that provides review and recommendation. I believe that's the genesis of the language change.
That's correct. A lot of the language you see in yellow, we took directly out of the statute for compliance purposes. And that was one of the things that they were clarifying. It's not the obligation of the planning commission to adopt a consistency statement. They should be advising the governing board who adopts the consistency statement.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions on this section? Okay, Mr. Ramada, I'll hand it over to you again.
All right. Moving on to the city council action. Again, procedural changes there, highlighted in green.
Do any commissioners have questions about this section regarding city council action? Okay, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner McIntosh, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just rereading this and realized I am a little bit concerned about, maybe I'm not, maybe, never mind. I guess it just sounds a bit odd to be revising conditions. Or it doesn't sound odd, it's not the right word. It's, I guess maybe it's disappointing that conditions would be changed after the public hearing and closed, but I guess that can happen anyway, so. I don't know. I guess I don't have a comment.
Well, I'll direct that. Maybe, Mr. Crane, if you could give us an example of a condition being changed after the public hearing, what that might look like.
Sure, and that's, that's actually fairly common. So there are a couple of different places throughout the process where an applicant can change the zoning condition. So obviously during staff review, that's allowed. During planning commission review, that would be allowed. Once the planning commission makes a recommendation, there is very little that can happen to change the conditions. There's a clause in the code that allows for what we call technical revisions, which means you can clarify the intent of the language, but you can't alter the, the conditions in a substantive manner. Once the city council schedules a public hearing, then the conditions are essentially set in place. And the reason for that is to provide certainty in the advertisements, in the paper. And so the public at large understands what's going to be discussed at the public hearing. Then the city council will conduct the public hearing. And once the public hearing is closed, there is a finite amount of time that the applicant can change their zoning conditions. Now, they have to be more restrictive. You can't be less restrictive than what the code would allow. But there's a 30 day window where the applicant can alter the conditions. And it's an important step because once the case is heard at public hearing, there might be new information that comes out. There might be new people that are involved in the public hearing that weren't involved in the planning commission review. So it's an additional allowance for the applicant to become responsive to the things they hear at the public hearing.
Thank you for that. Okay, are there any additional questions on that section? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Ramada, please move forward.
Okay, more changes in yellow there reflecting the majority of the changes that were on section one. And then moving on to page 11. More procedural changes regarding revisions.
Chair Fox, I have a question.
Apologies, Commissioner Bennett, please.
Thank you. On C, I think I may have mentioned this the last time. I don't understand the provision for allowing less restrictive conditions. Why are we, why is there even a process being introduced to allow a less restrictive condition?
And that's a good comment. This is Travis and a good question. So this doesn't happen often, but remember that the way that our code is written, it says you, you as an applicant are allowed to offer zoning conditions that are more restrictive than the code standard, right? And that's, that's true throughout the process. So planning commission review, an applicant can offer a condition and then retract that condition. That's allowed. Back, you know, you can go back and forth. The conditions can change to become less restrictive through the planning commission review. So an example of that might be where an applicant submits a request to reason a property to allow for. submits a request to rezone a property to allow for, let's say, a five story building. And through the process, you know, the planning commission says, you know, we'd really be supportive of a seven story building here. The applicant can change his zoning condition to increase that height. So that's allowed through planning commission. However, once the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council, and the city council sets a public hearing, as I mentioned before, that's when those conditions get locked in place, and they can only become less restrictive. So we have seen an instance like this on very few occasions. I can think of a small handful of times in my tenure with the city where this has happened. And it's where the city council receives a request and the city council has a public hearing, and members of the public show up and say, we'd really like this case, but it's, it's doing something. We'd like to see something that's less restrictive through the conditions. And the city council agrees with it. The remedy that we've had before has been you start over again. You go back to the front and revise your application, go through planning commission review again, and then come back to city council, and we have another public hearing. So this is a way to accommodate that without sending it back through the process. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments on this section? Okay, seeing none, please move forward, Mr. Remetta.
Okay. Moving on to page 12, more legal, state law compliance related changes.
Are there any questions related to this section? Seeing none, please move forward.
Okay, top of page 13 is just the continuation of that last section. And then general cleanup items here, as you see, not highlighted, just general cleanup with terminology.
Can you hold on this section for a moment?
Sure.
I actually just wanted to draw attention to this section for other planning commission members. You might use this list as a cheat sheet for how you review cases. I find it helpful. Does anyone have any questions about this section? Seeing none, please move forward.
Okay, next section. Page 14 deals with the time limitations between applications for rezonings and TCZs.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yeah, I had a question on this. And this is similar to the question I asked last, at our last meeting on this. So in G1A, the last section of highlighted green text, we say, it says a rezoning or a TCZ on the same property that was the subject of an application advertised for a city council legislative hearing, unless the prior application was approved, or 24 months has passed since the date of the withdrawal or denial of the prior application. And so the piece of text in there, the prior application was approved, is that referring to a rezoning case that was approved?
Yes, a rezoning or text change rezoning, a prior case that was approved.
Okay. So what I was asking last time, and I'm not sure if this was understood, was I was wondering if that portion could be taken out so that, and a rezoning case that was previously approved would still be subject to the 24 month. The other option in this paragraph, which is talking about a 24 month kind of waiting period. Because the way I'm reading it is, an approved rezoning case would not have to wait 24 months. It could just, without a special waiver, it could automatically be reviewed by city. It could automatically apply for rezoning again, you know, basically immediately after the first rezoning case was approved. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's how it's written. Yes, if the application's approved, there is no 24 month waiting period. If the previous application was approved.
Right. And I'm concerned about that because there are some neighborhoods, there are some locations in Raleigh where we have a lot of rezoning going on. And I'm just concerned, you know, in an area that's developing quickly, when a business is, when a business receives approval for rezoning, and then changes their mind and don't develop the property, I believe allowing them to apply for another rezoning in less than two years puts an undue burden on neighbors. And I'd like to have, you know, residents in Raleigh have some assurance of predictability in the rezoning process and not, you know, be in a constant churn of having to go learn about a new proposal for a site in their neighborhood. I know that's not, doesn't happen a lot, but I've seen some potential for that. In my own neighborhood is one example, at New Hope and Buffalo, I don't think we had any, we didn't have them on the same site within two years, but we had, you know, a number of rezonings in the area. And so there was just sort of a cascade of them in a row. And it's pretty overwhelming for laypeople who, you know, are learning about these anyway.
Commissioner McIntosh, so did I hear you correctly? You are recommending striking some of that language?
Yes, I was asking to strike the words, the prior application was approved, or so that the only method for applying for rezoning without special, without a special waiver from the city council, that the only way of applying for rezoning would be if 24 months have passed.
Mr. O'Haver, I see your hand.
Just to clarify, the applicant could still get a special waiver.
Right.
By city council.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Mr. York, did I see your hand as well? Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, one of the things that changed, I guess, a few years ago, and I don't remember how long back ago it was, it was before I joined the attorney's office, so I would rely on Travis or others. But the code was changed to prohibit variances on zoning conditions. And so if someone had a successful rezoning, conditional use or conditional zoning, that had support of the community, had support of planning commission, had support of the council, and they have it approved, but realize, when you get to the site plan, as many projects do, that they have an issue with one of the zoning conditions, there's no longer the avenue of going to the board of adjustment for a variance to fix a minor defect. And so that was one of the reasons why we looked at adding those zoning cases that had been approved, because there was support somewhere, enough for an approval for that rezoning. And so I appreciate the fatigue factor. But again, we're trying to balance property rights and access to the government, that's, both of which are protected by the Constitution.
Thank you, Mr. York. I see two hands. But first, Commissioner O'Haver, I believe I cut you off. Did you have any additional comment before we move forward?
I do, but I'm curious to hear Commissioner McIntosh and Commissioner Bennett's comments first.
Okay, Commissioner McIntosh, please go ahead.
I appreciate the description Mr. York gave for the reason for adding this, and that makes sense to me. But I also, I guess I'll just point out that I'm aware of a number of rezoning cases that have been approved recently where there was not neighbor support, you know, and the decision was made independently of neighbor wishes, with the exception of the owner of the property.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. I also understand what Mr. York was saying, and I don't have an issue with that at all. My issue is, and I think we have a case right now, or maybe we resolved it recently, where a rezoning is coming back to us, and it's removing a condition. That, I don't know if 24 months has passed, but that's the kind of thing that I'm concerned about, is that a rezoning gets approved because of a condition, and then it comes back, removing the thing that got it approved. That, that's, that's the part that seems to me like, you know, I appreciate the property rights, absolutely, but that's the part that seems to me like it's unfair to the community to have gone through a process, to get the conditions that made them comfortable, only to have it come right back to remove that thing. And not saying that that would necessarily happen, that it would get removed, but it just, it just seems like there's potential to abuse it. And I don't know if there's some way to do the language, Mr. York, so it addresses what you're talking about, which I don't think any of us has an issue with. But it removes the potential for someone to come back and remove a condition that maybe had neighbor support. But they don't like it anymore, or they want to change what they want to develop, and they need to move that, remove that condition.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Haver, I saw your hand.
Yes, and I, and I can confirm, I've been through a number of situations where we have put conditions in, and then we get into site plan, and we're backed into a corner. Now, I guess the, you could still get a special waiver. So it seems like there's still an avenue there. But I guess my first question is, even if it's approved, and we want to go back through and change, you still have to go through the entire process, correct? It's not like you're bypassing anything. So I'm not sure what the difference is between getting a special waiver, or is this going through the process? Because it certainly does exist. I've, I've been through it. And then, I was thinking the same thing, Commissioner Bennett, and I've been meaning to call you and chat with you about that case, because I've been thinking a lot about it, because that one's kind of a conundrum for me. And I certainly understand the optics of coming back and changing a zoning condition, whether it be 24 months, 36 months, 18 months, I'm not sure. But, but really, as I was thinking through that, and this is what I, I'll give you a call, we can sort of chat about, because I'd love to hear more of your thoughts on it. What, what we're really doing by asking, but what we're really doing is we're asking the applicant to look into a crystal ball and to understand what market forces, what conditions, what's being supported, 24 months, 36 months, 18 months down the line. And I just think back 12 months from where we are today. And if we were to ask applicants to make decisions on what the market would support, or bear, not knowing that a global pandemic was around the corner and has severe impacts on what supported, what can be built. I, I guess I'm just struggling with that a little bit by saying you have to wait 24 months, which seems somewhat arbitrary, 36 months, to understand what the market forces are, what will be supported, where the economy's going, how you're going to get your financing, and to say, you make a decision now, and you're locked into that for 24 months, to me seems like a pretty big ask. So just some thoughts. Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to force that. It's just something I've been thinking about. I mean, to call you and chat with, so maybe we'll do that, you know, this week or next.
Thank you. Commissioner Lantman?
Thank you. I'm on the fence on this as well. I do have concerns that if we have a complete limitation on any opportunity to rezone a site, even if it's for, you know, a new condition adding or removing, or whatever it is, to have it locked up for 24 months, I think that that opens the door for a lot of variability that we don't really want to see in planning. If it has to go through the zoning process anyway, and I get the point of not wanting to overwhelm neighbors with multiple meetings, but it also does give them another opportunity, neighbors, it gives neighbors another opportunity to come in. And if something were approved that they didn't like, then they can have additional input there. It's not like this is going to get done behind their backs. They're going to be fully engaged. They, yes, they'll have to spend one more time. But if it got approved last time, and now they have one more bite of the apple to make additional changes, that actually works to the neighborhood's favor. So I actually would not be in favor of removing that language. I think that, that they should be able to rezone within the period, you know. But that, that's my, my opinion there.
I have a question for staff, and then Commissioner McIntosh, I'll call on you after that. My question is, has there been a situation where changes to the code in other sections have affected how conditions might be applied to a particular project? And I'm, I'm specifically thinking of something like how, changing the code related to how height was calculated.
This is Travis, and that's a great question. And that was the first example that I could think of as well, because it was a, we changed the way that height was measured between the former code and the unified development ordinance. So I believe that had an impact on cases that had zoning conditions that spoke about height. I don't know that I can come up with specific examples, but that, that was the first one that jumped to mind for me.
Okay, thank you for that. And Commissioner McIntosh, did you still have a question or a comment?
I'm just going to make a comment. You know, maybe it doesn't matter 24 months or not. But I will just say, at New Hope and Buffalo, neighbors worked really hard. Going to, we had four rezonings, and went through an area planning exercise with the planning department. Neighbors were engaged and gave input. And we had, you know, a set of zoning conditions where neighbors were able to have an impact on rezoning at the southeast corner of New Hope and Buffalo. And unfortunately, the business that had agreed to those conditions, you know, changed their business model, you know, as Mr. O'Haver was alluding to, things do change. And because that business was not able to, you know, go through and do their work, you know, a new property, a new business came in and had a proposal for development. And, and they are, you know, and they did their rezoning that we reviewed a few months ago. And it was approved, we voted to deny it, I believe, but it was approved by city council, and it doesn't follow anything in our area plan. It did not consider neighbor concerns. They added a concrete pad at the last minute for a food truck that I guess counts as mixed use on the corner. I'm sorry, I'm rambling. Anyway, this is a harsh statement, but I don't feel like citizen concerns are being taken anyway. So what difference, what difference does it make?
So what I'd like to, Commissioner Bennett, please go ahead.
I'll be quick. So I'm thinking about everything that everybody is saying, and it makes sense. I just feel like maybe there's some sort of language that can be put in there to say, I mean, if it's less than 24 months, then it has to be because of a code change, or some, something changed in the market. Something needs to justify it other than they just changed their minds, because it just feels to me like there's the potential to abuse it. Now, maybe the data don't support that. But also, something, it also feels to me like this, this, we are being unequally, if that's the right word, accommodating to the applicants. And we aren't considering the neighborhoods as much. Now, I understand it's their property, but it just feels like everything, a lot of this is being done to make it more convenient for developers and for applicants. Granted, it shouldn't be an onerous process for them, you know. But at the same time, I think we also need to consider the community as well. And I don't want to feel like we're bending over backwards to make this a cakewalk for developers to get zonings and rezonings and rezonings. It just... It just, I want to be fair. I want to be respectful of property rights, but I also want to be respectful of neighborhoods. To the extent that we can balance those things, that's what I would be interested in. So if there is a way to get this language so it removes the incentive for abuse and allows an applicant to come back if something has changed, you know, so they're not locked into waiting for 24 months, I would be interested in, in looking at, at that.
By show of hands from other commissioners, how many other commissioners would be interested in adding additional language to address what Commissioner Bennett just discussed? Okay, seeing a majority. Mr. Remetta, does that give you enough information to move forward on that item?
Before he answers, could I interject for a moment?
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there are a couple of different pieces to this section. The first is the identification of what we call a special waiver by city council. Right? So what that means is an applicant needs to appear before the city council and ask to refile a zoning case that's previously been heard within 24 months. So what is new in this language is the addition of the language that's, that's been approved, I think. That wasn't there before. I think the, the previous language only referenced the 24 month period. And if an applicant had a need to rezone the property, the applicant had to appear in front of the city council. That's the special portion. And then if, if Justin could scroll down a page, it's just, it got pushed down right there. Perfect. Thank you. There are actual criteria that the city council uses to determine whether or not a waiver should be granted. So this language isn't too far of what we have today. What it's doing is it would allow, as written, it would allow for applicants that have received approval just to come back in and submit again without a special waiver. So if that's the hangup, then that, or approval language could be stricken. And we could retain the rest of the section. And I think that's where Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner McIntosh.
Commissioner Bennett?
So Travis, if I'm understanding you, what I was just saying to try to get language to put in is addressed in the special waiver. That's what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So maybe, I don't know, maybe, okay, well then I'm fine with striking the language. Like Commissioner McIntosh said, if there is an avenue for the applicant to come back within 24 months, if conditions change through the special waiver. Because it seems like then we're, we are already addressing what some other commissioners have expressed concern about, that the market might change or, you know, the UDO might change. It seems like that would be accommodated through the special waiver.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, yes, they could get a special waiver from city council. Sorry.
Okay. So given that information, are commissioners in favor of striking the language at the end of the subsection A and then retaining the language related to the waiver requirements? Commissioner O'Haver?
Yeah, before I commit to that, I would like to take a minute to really absorb item I. Is it, is it very narrowly defined by those four bullet items? Or is there an opportunity to make a case for something that might not be predicted in these four bullets to get a special waiver? Or is it specifically these four things? Because generally, I agree with Commissioner McIntosh and Commissioner Bennett. Like if the avenue is still there and you still go to city council, you can make a, make a request to say, here are the reasons. I guess I just want to make sure how narrowly defined that is with these four bullets. Because again, I don't want to predict what we might be overlaying on a reason why someone may want to come in and adjust their emissions or their zoning.
This is Travis. So Commissioner O'Haver, that's a good thought. If you read through the four criteria, and I use that word loosely because it's not really review criteria. It's just considerations for the city council. I think you'll find that they're written with enough latitude to provide an applicant to, to fit into one of those four buckets.
Okay, okay. Well, if, if my fellow commissioners agree, again, I think generally I get behind where we're going with this.
Okay, just to, just to verify by show of hands, we're saying we are comfortable with striking the language in the earlier section and retaining the language up in the special waiver description. Okay, by the majority, I'm seeing we are good with that. Mr. Remetta, you can move forward until the section after special waiver. I'm also going to acknowledge that it is, let's see, time check, 5:18. And Mr. Remetta, I'll, I'll defer to you in how much longer you believe going through page by page will take.
I, I think we're almost there, Madam Chair. And I would say that the committee needs to take some action today, whether that be to make a recommendation on the change or to recommend a request for extension since your, the full commission's deadline is May 8th. So your Tuesday, the 27th meeting would be the last opportunity for the full commission to discuss this case.
Okay, with that, I think we can kind of just buckle up and move through.
Yeah, so thank you. The, this last section here on page 15 and 16 are the, as you'll see highlighted in yellow, state law changes related to modifying PD and master plan approved conditions.
Do any commissioners have questions or comments on this section? Seeing none, please move forward.
So simply, section five, just some general cleanup. You'll see no highlights there, just a, a change to the definition to include the planning director's designated. And then the rest of the ordinance actually is just a table that shows the term conditional use zoning district being replaced to conditional zoning district.
Do any commissioners have any questions about this last section or the table? Seeing none, you can probably pull down the screen share if we're at the end.
We are.
Thank you. Okay, so as Mr. Remetta mentioned, we do have to take action at this point. I believe the list of changes we had so far were related to striking the last section, discussing the 24 hour wait period. And then also related to block perimeter conditions. So it's just those two. Okay. So with those, those two changes to take place, I'm gonna, gonna defer to staff if making those changes by the meeting on Tuesday is possible.
This is Travis. So making the changes, I think, will be possible. The challenge that we face is the planning commission agendas are published on Thursdays now to give you a little bit of extra reading time. So the, the agenda is already published. This item is included. And we do that when your, your planning commission meeting follows the committee of the whole, which is, it happens on occasion, given the calendar. So what we can do is just provide an update to the full planning commission on these two changes. And we'll have the, the ordinance ready so that by the time you make your recommendation, you can actually see the language, you know, as it's, as it's written, and then you can make your recommendation based on that. But it in board docs.
I have been informed that there is one member of the public who wishes to speak on this item. I'd like to allow that if the moderator could unmute them.
Sure. We have Edie Jeffries.
Go ahead, Ms. Jeffries.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to applaud the commissioners that spoke up about having a balance between the desire to make it, to facilitate zoning cases moving through the process with, with little difficulty, but to balance that against the concerns of neighborhoods. And that is something that I think we have seen continue to erode out here in the public without the CACs, being able to help neighbors understand zoning cases and understand how to reach out to the various entities within the city to ask questions. I am now chairing what was the city-supported Five Point CAC. We are now just the Five Point CAC. And we have several zoning cases in our area that are hitting this area for the first time in a long time. And we are really struggling to help those neighbors understand the process and how they can interact with the developers and whether the developers will actually respond to their concerns. And so the neighborhood meetings have been helpful, at least the one that I've been to so far. But I do get the feeling that, that with that particular developer, that they felt like the neighborhood very, had very little leverage to ask the things that they were asking for. And so it is a concern that I have that, that we need the balance between the neighborhoods who are not educated in the process and the developers who are very educated in the process. And to make sure that both parties are really negotiating to get to a better product for both. So I appreciate your keeping those things in mind and I miss working with you guys. So it's good to talk to you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. Are there any other members of the public that are signed up to speak?
No, ma'am, not on this item. If there is anyone, I guess you could, you could message the host.
Okay, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion from the commission.
I thought we were waiting to get the text at the next meeting. Sorry, I was confused.
Mr. Crane, can you clarify?
Sure. So again, the text can't be loaded into your agenda because the agenda's already been published. But we can, staff can work on the language so that we essentially read it into the record. But as I understand what you've done is you've made a recommendation that on page five, in sub paragraph B, you wanted to remove that language about block perimeter exemptions, which is a very simple strike through. So that, that can happen very simply and be described very simply. And then the, the second change and final change is on page 14. I believe what Ms. McIntosh mentioned was to strike the language. Prior application was approved or, and that retains and preserves that 24 month waiting period by the city council.
But it also seemed like that text was a little confusing about if still allowed a special waiver, but I, I know y'all will fix that.
There's still a special waiver.
Sorry, go ahead.
But the special waiver is listed at the very top of the paragraph in a separate section of text, but it's still there.
Oh, no, yeah, I just, sometimes I get confused with stuff that's stricken out and what you read and how it reads, legalese, you know. But I, I trust them. I mean, I don't have any question that y'all will deal with it. I'm, I'm happy to make a motion if we're ready. Good.
Mr. York, did you have a comment before Commissioner O'Haver moves forward?
Well, I was just trying to clarify. It, it's hard to read with the green highlighting. But under the special waiver, under subsection two, special waiver, he still says for any other circumstance determined by the city council to be reasonable and in the public interest. So that's the catchall that Travis was referring to that enables, it's, it's not just those four that aren't highlighted. There is that other catchall that gives the council a broad, a lot of discretion in granting that special waiver. At first, when you look at the green, it's hard to see that that's not being removed. The first portion of that is being removed. But there is a provision there that's fairly broad. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. York. Commissioner O'Haver, did you want to move forward with the motion?
Yeah, let me get back to that. I'll recommend.
Commissioner O'Haver, can you get a little closer to your microphone? I'm, I'm hearing some are having some issues hearing you.
Sorry, can y'all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Where my microphone is, right here. A different gadget, so. I recommend approval for text change 1920 rezoning process and city code covenants. Those text amendments consistent with the relevant policies and the comprehensive plan policies I am 1.1 consistency of the comprehensive plan policy to future land use map and zoning consistency.
Is there a second? Mr. Bennett?
Second.
Here. Mr. York, do we need to do a roll call of the votes or a show of hands from committee? Show of hands? By show of hands, how many are in support of the motion? Seeing one, two, three, four, five, six hands, motion passes, six to zero. Thank you again, Mr. Remetta, for going through line by line, a 22-page document with the full group. I acknowledge that was a heavy lift. Thank you very much.
Certainly, it was, it was fun. Thank you all for having me.
I don't know if I'd go with fun, but okay, moving on to item two. Item two is rezoning Z721 located at 3095 Gresham Lake Road on the southern side, located approximately a quarter mile east of its intersection with I-540. Initial staff review of this proposal indicates that the request is inconsistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan and inconsistent with the future land use map. Seeing double inconsistency, it has been placed on this agenda to allow detailed discussion. You will start off with a staff presentation led by Sarah Ellis.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully this will be as fun as our last item. This is Z721 located off Gresham Lake Road. It's again, a request to rezone just under 11 acres from industrial mixed use three to commercial mixed use three with conditions. And the deadline for planning commission action is June 28th. So the zoning in the area is generally industrial, as you see on the parcel. But I will say there's a little bit of a departure. So just kind of real quickly to orient you what you're looking at. The parcel is, you know, the outline piece that's IX3. There's some more IX2. That's the immediate neighbor of the site to the east and the west. And then that R4 that you see bordering it to the top is Durant Nature Preserve. And I'll show some aerial maps so you can get oriented to the larger space. But just wanted to point out, there's sort of a mixture of industrial immediately surrounding the site, heavy industrial to the south of the site, and then some residential as you get a little bit further to the west. So here's that aerial that I just mentioned. The site is highlighted in the yellow box. And then the R4 that you were just looking at before, that's Durant Nature Preserve predominantly. Then to the west of the site, there are some industrial uses, sort of a small variety of both warehoused and outdoor industrial uses. To the west of the site, there are also some industrial. And I'm going to show another slide a little more zoomed in because there's a small pocket of residential. So I don't, that's being covered up by the word industrial here. So I just wanted to make sure folks sort of knew everything in the vicinity. South, again, I mentioned there's some heavy industrial uses. I believe that's a landfill. And then you see some moderate density residential closer to 540. So this is that zoomed in image of the site. And just wanted to highlight that there is some residential existing. There's about three homes sort of in this cutout of the L of the parcel, if you will. And then the property sort of just further west is industrial. And then as you keep going further west towards 540, there's some moderate density residential. And then again, some industrials to the east of the site. Here are a couple of different views looking in on the site. So this is looking, standing on Gresham Lake Road, looking west into the site. It's that sort of undeveloped wooded parcel that you see. And then number two, looking into the site east, you can see there's a house. So that was that little pocket of the few houses that are sort of next to the site that I showed you previously. And then the site is right adjacent. So it's that forested area. This is a conditional use rezoning case. So I'll just kind of walk you through a summary of the conditions. There are a few uses prohibited. Generally prohibiting lower density residential uses. The site is limited to no more than 200 dwelling units. And there is a condition to restrict rents to 60% of AMI. And I'll say, this is just a summary. There, the actual the actual language is more detailed and complies with any requirements that we have. But I just put the summary in here for brevity's sake, but the full language of the conditions in the packet. Then the conditions also specify that there will be a fifteen-foot border on the parcels west of the site. And again, the full language of the condition does specify pins in a greater level of detail. I just shortened it for the sake of brevity and for this presentation, but full condition in your packet. That condition also goes on to say that there will be, within that fifteen feet of bordering the parcel, there will be a fence with signs displaying no trespassing signs. And it specifies the spacing of the no trespassing signs and goes on to say that a six-foot berm and plantings will also be required. And that's those are requirements that will go above and beyond code standards. Then there's also a condition stating that no residential building shall be located within ten feet of adjoining parcels. And again, that's further detailed in the full condition language. And finally, the condition offers a twenty-foot paved path that will connect from Gresham Lake Road to Durant Nature Preserve. So just a summary of sort of what's current versus what's being proposed. Again, the current zoning is industrial mixed-use three. Proposed zoning is commercial mixed-use three with conditions. It would increase the residential density slightly. And then, as you can see, it would actually decrease the total number of units permitted on the site. And that's by virtue of the condition that was offered. So the applicant did offer a condition to limit units to two hundred. The setbacks would increase just slightly, about two feet. But there's also some condition language in there that would provide a little more detail. So what I'm showing you is just the code without the nuance that some of those conditions would provide a little greater setback in some specified areas. And then again, just showing you sort of a change in intensity. So what the bigger changes that you're seeing here is that there would be more office permitted and the retail would remain the same. And again, there'd be a slight increase in residential density, but the units would be decreased. So here is a map showing you the future land use designation for the area, which is business and commercial services. The request is inconsistent with this because this designation generally envisions industrial uses and not quite as much residential as would be envisioned by commercial mixed-use. It's inconsistent with the plan overall, as well as with the future land use map. The request is consistent with these policies. And I'll just kind of spend a second talking through what they are. The policy, each one point two geographic dispersal affordable units, that's one I hadn't seen much. So just in case folks aren't familiar with that, there is a map in the comprehensive plan that maps out a couple indicator, a couple poverty indicators, and then it also maps out where existing affordable units are located. The intent of that policy is to disperse affordable units across the city rather than concentrating them in one particular area. So this site was located in a census tract that did not have existing affordable units in it based on the map and the plan. Additionally, the request would increase the housing diversity and variety in the area by allowing slightly more on what is permitted today. That policy relating to pedestrian networks is related to the condition providing a connection from Gresham Lake to the Durant Nature Preserve. And then the order revitalization is related to the fact that this site is located in an economic development priority area and that it is encouraging some type of productive use of the land where it is currently vacant now. And then finally, the last one is just referring to that zoning condition for the path to Durant Lake Nature Preserve. Inconsistent policies are future land use map, as you viewed previously, zoning of annexed lands. And that's only because the site is within the ETJ. So that policy is just saying if the zoning should, the future land use map should be consistent for with the requests for parcels that are located outside of the city's corporate limits. And then a few others that are related to loss of industrial land and limiting commercial uses in industrial areas, which it's it's an industrial area, so that changes inconsistent with these policies. There's no outstanding issues with the case. And again, deadline for action is June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. And again, just to make sure that folks were aware, this would require a flu amendment. So it would amend the map from business and commercial services to community mixed-use. And this is just an image of what that would look like. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and I will stop sharing my screen.
There we go. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. I believe we have Molly Stewart representing the applicant for Landon Cox.
Thank you, Sarah Fox. This is Molly Stewart, Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of LDG Development. And I will note that Landon Cox is is on the line. And if it's all right with the commission, I would like to turn this over to him after I do say a few words. But to get started, obviously, we we have a lot of issues going a lot of directions on this site. So next slide, please. To introduce what the request is, LDG Development is a large developer of affordable housing. That's what they do, and that is what is contemplated for the site. And so I have a few major points to discuss today. One is just sort of overall policy, what should happen in this part of town. Two, in particular, why this site is a good site for housing. And then, and third, I'd like to address, you know, we have obviously heard some concerns about that. And so I'd like to address those as well. And this slide just sort of steps back a little bit to look at the big picture. As you can see, there's a wide range of uses in this area. So this area is is a little bit of an edge area. It's a little bit transitional. And there are, you know, all of that yellow, those are all residential uses to the west. Obviously, that major park to the north. And although light purple, including the the site that we're looking at today, all of that is industrial mixed-use IX zoning. As you're probably aware, that IX mixed-use zoning is is probably the most mixed-use district that we have in the city. It allows nearly all of our uses. So in addition to industrial, residential, retail, various kinds of commercial are all permitted in that IX district. Next slide, please. So one of the concerns that we have heard during this process is about whether there should be residential use on this site. And so although we'll come back to that topic, I did just want to quickly point out that we're actually reducing the residential entitlement on this site below what is there today and below that of its neighboring properties as well. Next slide, please. So so we're back to looking at that same picture. But 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 just to look at this again, this is, you know, the existing and the surrounding IX zoning contemplates not only a more intensive residential use than is proposed under the request of zoning, but also with that industrial residential use in much closer proximity to industrial uses, which are contemplated to be on the same parcel or even in the same building. Next slide, please. This is just a description of that IX district, and it it just emphasizes that there's no inherent conflict between industrial uses and residential, which are absolutely contemplated to be next in this area. Next slide, please. So the nearest residential uses here are about two hundred and eighty feet away. And they're in a lower-density duplex arrangement. That blue line you see on your screen kind of connecting the site with that residential area measures two hundred and eighty-two feet. And I will note also that the proposed rezoning doesn't take any land out of industrial use. As staff noted, this is a vacant site. And and sort of the request would represent a small reallocation of what is really surplus unused land from that, you know, possible future use to permit a use that we know is badly needed today and for the foreseeable future. Next slide, please. And the other reason we think that policy does support this as a site for housing is the city's affordable housing location policy, which as staff noted, identifies this area as one in which affordable housing is needed and encouraged. Next slide, please. So now I'd like to turn to why is this particular site a good place for housing, for for residences? And and obviously, as you see on this side, slide, it is immediately adjacent to one of the city's premier parks, Durant Nature Preserve. And the applicant has committed to providing pedestrian access to that park, not only for its residents, but for nearby residents and workers. That that zoning condition requires a public pedestrian access easement from Gresham Lake Road from which there's no access today. And then, once you're into the site, there are trails through the site that connect you up to that greenway on the north side of the park. Next slide, please. So this is not necessarily a slide about kind of what's available to residents. This this slide is about, you know, as we zoom out, we see this as a large industrial area. And I just want to point out that that this this is the kind of flex office park to the east. And and it's not, you know, it doesn't have a monolithic industrial character, but it does also provide services to the public at large. And in particular, there's a concentration of religious facilities as well as fitness facilities. Next slide, please. The site is also convenient to other goods and services. There is a food line four minutes away on Litchford Road. And then what you see here, that large mass of red commercial zoning there and the parcel, the site is up to the top left of your screen outlined in red. But that large mass of of red there on your screen, that's Triangle Town Center and the surrounding commercial uses. And kind of the center of that is seven minutes away from the site. And that provides not only the extensive services for for the residents, including another grocery store there at the Target, but also employment opportunities. This is a major employment center. And that takes us to the part where I address some of the concerns that we've heard. Next slide, please. And and one of those being employment. One purpose of designated designating areas of the city for industrial and similar uses is to allow for employment. And and this is just another use of the same area and showing the density of jobs. And and obviously, Triangle Town Center again pops out on this map, and so that's a major center. I also want to note that at its other communities, the applicant also provides a very complete package of resident services, and that includes business literacy, legal assistance, after-school programs. There's GED assistance and resume workshops. You'll hear more from the applicant about the kinds of programs that are proposed. They do vary across properties. But in general, this is a very kind of high amenity, high-service type of product to to assist the residents in accessing the job market. And so I did want to note that. Another concern that we've heard is about transit access. And and it's true, there's no direct transit access on this site. The Triangle Town Center again is is seven minutes away. So in addition to just sort of standard carpooling, which would be very easy at seven minutes away, you know, the applicant is also looking at providing a shuttle service over to Triangle Town Center, which is not just a jobs and services hub, but also a transit hub. And and it's a regional transit hub, providing access for residents to the entire city and to the region. Also anecdotally, as as an operator of many of these communities, are the applicants sort of anecdotally notes that the overwhelming majority of of residents do have cars. So it's not generally a limiting factor more than anywhere else in other types of housing. And also, I'll just note that, you know, this is not government housing. All of the residents have have choices that they face in the market. And this only provides one more option. It takes nothing off the table. Next slide, please. And I will point out right away, this is a, we will zoom in on this in the next slide. But for now, the the idea here is that the other major concern that we heard was about noise. You know, can residents live in a place where where there are some industrial uses nearby? Is there a noise issue here? And so before jumping into what's on your screen, I'll note the applicant has spoken with the neighbors and the industrial neighbors, as well as residential property managers, and noted a clear lack of complaints. There there really just aren't noise complaints in this area, even though we have the existing residences and industrial uses. I'll also note that as a subsidized affordable housing project, there are required standards to be met that are set by HUD. And so, you know, it actually kind of comes with a layer of an important standard that that has to be met to get these these units constructed. So what is on your screen, and I just wanted you to see the context for what we will zoom in on. This, we actually had to perform a noise study. And so a noise study was completed to determine whether this is a reasonable place for for housing. And and this, what you have here is a letter from the engineer who did that study. Next slide, please. And then to zoom in on that letter. There you go. So there are a couple of main points I wanted to highlight, which is one, that the analysis standards that that were looked at in that study went above and beyond the HUD requirements to just to ensure, and the applicant really wanted to be sure that all that industrial noise was captured. And then it kind of assumed as the base level that would need to be mitigated to meet those HUD standards. And then, of course, the study also concludes that that the project can mitigate to meet those standards. So all of that has been looked at. Next slide, please. Additionally, this is a concept plan and admittedly an early concept plan. But the idea is that the applicant would really like to keep all those buildings toward the back of the site. And that does a couple of things, that it introduces distance from the noise that's being generated. There's also a topographic advantage. The slide, the site does slope away from Gresham Lake Road, especially as you kind of get to where the site widens out there in the back. There's a big drop-off, and it makes a big difference. I know unfortunately, none of you were able to make it to a site visit to to see this firsthand. We've all walked the site and noticed that it's true. If you stand right up on Gresham Gresham Lake Road, there's a fair bit of noise from truck traffic and operations generally. And as you walk away from that roadway, the the noise drops off very dramatically. And then especially as you get to that back part of the site, it really virtually disappears. It's a big difference back there. So there are some other ways that this is being addressed. One of the particular issues that we heard with respect to noise was about the recycling facility across the street. It's on the south side of Gresham Lake Road. And that was kind of raised as a particular noise concern. So I would like to note that we have those existing duplex units to the west. And they are, they're actually closer to that site than than these units would be. Significantly so, the the closest units on the duplexes are five hundred, just a little bit more than five hundred feet from a point kind of at the center of the frontage of that recycling center property. And from that same point, the units on this site would be about seven hundred forty-four feet under this plan. So it's about fifty percent farther away. And again, there are no complaints coming out of those duplex units today. Additionally, as you see on this plan, that front portion of the site would consist of some combination of either tree conservation, if it qualifies, or reforestation as needed. Obviously, we have to do some work to put that path through there. So some combination of that. And I'll note that none of that was taken into account in doing that noise study. So this is kind of additional mitigation that doesn't really count toward toward getting us to that to those HUD standards. Next slide, please. This is just a clarification of what's happening on the east side of the property in particular, just because it's a little bit hard to read the conditions and see what's happening with the berm and the additional landscaping, the fence slash noise barrier, and then the pedestrian easement as well. So there's kind of a significant buffer on that side. Next slide, please. With that, I would like to introduce Landon Cox of LDG Development to tell you a little bit about about the applicant itself and about the services that are provided for existing residents in their other communities.
Hi, thank you, Molly, and thanks, everyone, for for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to give you guys a a broad overview of LDG Development and the communities that we have in other states so that so you guys can get an idea of what to expect here at the site. So as Molly said, my name's Landon Cox. I'm a member of the North Carolina Development Team for LDG, along with Curtis and Darren Crispert colleagues who were on the call. We are new to North Carolina, but we've been developing affordable housing for twenty-five years across the southeast. And so we are developers, builders, and long-term owner-operators of of affordable housing communities, but family and senior. This would be a family project. And we are excited to be in North Carolina. This would actually be the first community that we will have in North Carolina. So we, and this, before we move on, this is just a standard garden-style design, which is which is exactly the kind of what what we could expect of this community garden-style development. So next slide, please. So a little bit about the the services and programs that LDG would offer at at this community. I should note the, we were still going through the process of kind of fine-tuning what what the programs and services would be at this location. But I I pulled an example of a company who provides services, a third-party company that provides services for LDG in in Texas. They won't necessarily be doing this project, but but they are a good representation of what you could expect here. So our principles have really challenged and empowered the developers to do everything we can to benefit residents beyond kind of providing a nice place to live. And and the primary, a big way that we do that is through the programs and services that we offer residents free of charge. Free of charge to them. And you go to the next slide. So the the way these service offerings kind of come together, the site, like others, will have a that program coordinator who'd be assigned to the community that would tailor the the programs and activities, services to the resident population. And so they would reach out to And so they would reach out to local nonprofits, other volunteers, and create a kind of tailor-make a package to benefit the residents. And so they pull from a grouping, in this case of 150 programs, and kind of assemble something to fit the needs of the residents. And we go to the next slide and it'll give you kind of an idea. The product offerings, it's very, it's broad and really kind of all-encompassing. And so this is an example of a flyer of monthly programs at a neighborhood, I'm sorry, a community that we have in Texas. And you can see they are offered periodically and range everything from English to second language to legal assistance, recreational activities on Wednesday, the 31st, and counseling services, really a really diverse kind of offering. Go to the next slide. Another example for another community in Texas that we have, again, youth development, youth development programs there. I don't think it was on this, I didn't point out on previous slide, programs to help residents apply for scholarships for college, after-school programs, and health and wellness programs, nutrition and screenings and things of that nature. So you can go to the next slide. So we have two profiles of examples of how these service providers really go above and beyond to help our residents where there are needs. And this is an example of a mother who lives at the community in Texas, who, whose family was impacted by COVID-19, like a lot of families were, and found that she needed to re-enter the workforce, but needed some help doing so. And so the, our service provider met with, met with this lady, helped to identify marketable vocational skills that she had and to update her resume and work with her on finding jobs that were conducive to her skill set. And through working with her, we're able to get her back into the job market at a medical facility. So you can go to the next slide. Another example, and these are, these are not just one-off. This is common, common to see at the communities. This is a single family, a single mother who had just separated from family and found herself kind of out on an island and needed some help. And so the service coordinator was able to step in and provide food, access to food for the family, and also help the mother find employment and also arrange for her to receive rental assistance, which allowed her and her boys to, her and her boys to remain at the community and start to get their lives moving forward, onward and upward. So you can go to the next slide. This is an example of a community space that's available to residents. This is in the community building. Give you an idea of where residents can come and hang out by themselves or they can rent, reserve the space for gatherings with families or anything that they'd like to use the space for. You can go to the next slide. So this is an example of a pool that LDG would provide, and we would also do so with this community. Note, I note that the building type is different here, but this gives you a good idea of kind of a typical pool area that will be at this community. Next slide. So this is the kitchen to one of our two-bedroom units, I think. And typical kitchen, all the units would come with stainless steel appliances, energy-efficient appliances, lots of cabinet space, granite top cabinet space for the units. All construction would, of course, exceed Energy Star standards. I can go to the next slide. Another image of a common community space at the community that residents can reserve ahead of time for parties and/or come up and take a break from the pool and have lunch or use the facility however they'd like to. And go to the next slide. So this is an excerpt from a traffic study that we had performed. And I would let that Rick Baker, he can speak more in depth about the results of the traffic study, but this is just to show.
This is Molly, I'm sorry, I can actually jump in. This is actually there for reference, just in case. This is actually from the staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Showing that our rezoning would reduce traffic based on the current zoning. So sorry about that. That was a little bit of a trapdoor for you, but that is the last slide.
Yeah, thank you. And sorry, just in riving up, thank you all again for the opportunity to speak with you this evening and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, sir. I understand there is one member of the public signed up to speak on this item. The moderator could unmute the speaker.
Sure. I'll also say if there is anyone else who would wish to speak, you can send a message to the host. But the attendee who did sign up ahead of time is Mr. Jim Anthony. Jim, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, folks. I am the owner of the property and have been working with Landon and his team to move this project forward. And a couple of thoughts. One, I have not yet discussed with Landon, but I'll bet you he feels positively about it. And the other is to point out to the commission that the rail track that was just purchased by the state of North Carolina up to Richmond runs up the CSX tracks, which are approximately 150 yards from here, maybe 250 yards. And as you know, when these rail tracks come in and there will be a stop, we are told there is going to be a planned stop on those railroad tracks at Gresham Lake Road and the CSX, well, used to be CSX. I believe it's 100% owned by the state of North Carolina. And anyone who's been in the business very long knows that industrial neighborhoods in a city like Raleigh virtually inevitably transition into residential neighborhoods when there's transportation nodes that are available to them. And I honestly am convinced that this area is going to transition away from industrial into residential shortly after and maybe even before that transit stop gets built. So that's comment number one. Number two, I'd like to suggest to Landon that he consider building a public parking lot on the private land up at the front, where you have that large, open space adjacent to the, essentially what's a greenway trail, to connect to the park. And I think that would be a very attractive neighborhood feature to utilize that land. I think the planning department would absolutely love for you to do that. So those are my, but I might be suggesting something you don't want to commit to, but I am putting it out there. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. I'm going to pull back to the table and see if there are any questions or comments from commissioners. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. So I love that we're talking about affordable housing. Love, love, love. I loved all the services that were mentioned by Mr. Fox. I had actually written a question before the applicant started. Would they consider providing some sort of shuttle service or something since there's no transit? And they answered that. So I was like checking off all of this as they were all talking. My only concern is, maybe was, that it's got industrial on both sides. But maybe Travis or somebody with staff could comment on what Mr. Anthony just said. I mean, I guess if the expectation is that this is likely to change from industrial, then that might affect my thought process. I know you can't predict that, but I mean, would you, could you just offer some comment on that remark?
I could offer a comment, but it would be entirely uninformed. I would instead depend on Mr. Anthony, who I know is not just this property owner. I know that he's a developer that's worked in the area, not just in Raleigh, but throughout the triangle very successfully. So he probably has his finger on the pulse of the development community much better than I.
Are there any additional comments from staff regarding the conversion of the CXS S-line to potential TOD? Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner McIntosh?
I'll just make a comment. I'm really excited to see this proposal for affordable housing. I was concerned about the location, but the site plan seemed really well-thought-out to me. I really liked the buffering of the trees. I also thought, think the idea of adding some parking there might be nice, but I think it'd be important to keep some of those trees as buffering. And the site plan seemed well-thought-out and reasonable and seemed like a nice neighborhood addition. And I hope we'll see more of this all over Raleigh.
Thank you. I have one question for staff, and then I saw Commissioner Lampman saying, the only inconsistency I'm actually seeing is related to the future land use map. And I'm, I'm struggling because were we in a position to see a rezoning of this land to its current zoning to IX3? We would likely not approve that next to the park. So this would seem to be a preferable outcome. But I am wondering if there's any history related to why the future land use category of business and commercial services was chosen.
Well, you're testing my memory here, going back to, what, 2008, when the future land use map was originally drawn. If I were to take an educated guess, I would say that the, you've got two land use categories here, I think, or two zoning districts, I'm sorry. There's a industrial and then industrial mixed-use. If I'm, to make an assumption, I would imagine that everything that's on the, or the majority of the southern portion adjacent to Gresham Lake, that's own heavy industrial, was initially zoned industrial 2, which was a former category we had in the old code. And the north side was zoned industrial 1, and that's why it's got IX zoning today. Likely, the future land use map designation was just a reflection of the current state of affairs. You know, there was a pretty concerted effort to maintain as much industrial land as we had on the future land use map. So that's likely an outcome.
Thank you for that. Are there any additional comments, Commissioner Lampman, apologies?
Sure. That was a really strong presentation. And I completely agree with some of the forecasting on with the rail line and those industrial sites. And I do think that this is a good opportunity. There were some initial flags that came up for me, just being in the business. You know, NCHFA would not approve from a 9% application being directly next to the auto place and then the recycling center. So if all of that is addressed through HUD and all the processes, I think that that would work. Was there, just to ask, is there, you know, an environmental study or a soil test for the site?
Yes, this is Molly Stewart. Yes, I do know that an initial study was performed. And Landon may be able to say more about that.
Yeah, sure. The, we, there will definitely be additional soil, Phase 1 and geotechnical survey performed in the future. We do have the benefit, though, of a Phase 1 and a geotechnical report from a prior, someone who had the land under contract previously in the last couple of years. And so it's, so we will renew it. But there, there were, there were no indications of any kind of, any kind of environmental hazards or anything like that on the site. And they thought it was a very low likelihood that, because of the topography and the way that the water kind of flows away from the site, distance from all those, all those things, that we were at a very low risk of future contamination from the surrounding uses.
Thank you for that, sir. Are there any follow-up questions from commissioners? Seeing none, I would like to offer a motion that we recommend approval to the full planning commission for Z721. As this case is reasonable and in the public interest and supported by the comprehensive plan, specifically policies related to the geographical dispersal of affordable units, housing diversity, housing variety, pedestrian networks, corridor revitalization, and improving park access. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bennett?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. And I believe we could do a show of hands, Mr. York. Yep, by show of hands, how many are in support of the motion? And I see we have unanimous support of the motion. Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation, very informative. Okay, I believe that concludes the items on our agenda. Are there any other discussion items for the good of the order? Yeah, Commissioner Bennett?
I just want to say, I think this is the first explicit affordable housing rezoning that I've seen since I've been on the commission. And I'm just really, really happy. So this is a great way to end the meeting, just bravo. I, you know, I echo Commissioner McIntosh that I'd love to see these all over Raleigh. But this is a start, and so I'm really excited.
Thank you for your comment. Commissioner McIntosh?
I'll just say that I think this is the first affordable housing proposal I've seen since I started here December 2018. So, and I don't, yeah, thank you.
Excellent. I'd say we leave it on a high note. That concludes this meeting of the committee of the hall. Our next meeting will be Thursday, May 20th at 4:00 PM. Thank you and have a good evening, everyone.